Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to open this Board of Supervisors meeting for Sutter County. Members of the public will be allowed to address the Board during the Board's consideration of each agenda item. If you wish to speak on any item appearing on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card. They're right here in there in the back, presented to the Board Clerk. If you wish to speak about more than one item on the agenda, please fill out a separate speaker card for each item. If you wish to speak on a public comment, please fill out a speaker card marking "Public Comment," and matters will be announced. And please report to the roster in the back and be recognized by the Chair. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Present.
Supervisor Zigamire. Supervisor Baines.
Present.
Supervisor Conant.
Present. Jack Mayberry of Twin Cities Church of Christ will do the invocation, followed by Charlie Brandon, Navy veteran, will do the flag salute.
And that's Jack Mayberry, and I'm not here to take up a collection, just to say a prayer.
Thank you.
Our Father God, we come before you this afternoon to seek your blessing in this meeting and to always glorify your name in the things that we say and do. We thank you for the very day and for all the wonderful things you do for each of us each day. We must always recognize you are in control of all things, so we ask and seek your help in doing the right things in our lives, and we pray that this Board will honor you in doing the right things as well for our community, for every family they represent, to do those things that would be honorable, and they do those things that would not be selfish in any way, but seek to do those things that would help this community to grow and to always put you first and to do the things that would help us to better live together as a family. Watch over us now and continue to help us each day, to serve you each day. And again, we thank you for everything and ask this prayer in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jack. Charlie?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for witnessing essence, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll start some presentations. Dan, we're gonna sit here first, because we're gonna do a PowerPoint. Sarah Encart Rios will lead us with our CSAC representative, Graham Knutson.
Okay, she'll do that. Hey, good afternoon. I am so excited to be here. This is a rare day for me in that I'm able to present before three different counties, but now I'm in the right one. Your Public Health Officer, who shared with one of the other counties I was in this morning, will not take that back to Yuba. I'm Graham Knutson. I'm the CEO of the California State Association of Counties, and we're the organization that has the great honor of representing every elected county supervisor in California. So my bosses are all 296 of the elected county supervisors. We've been around for a very, very long time, 129 years. That's when I had hair. The, and in all that time, there's, our core function is really about elevating the county voice, elevating the community voice, ensuring that the priorities in every single community in California are represented in Sacramento and in Washington DC. That's our core charge, and we've done that. I'm gonna mention two issues. One is related to broadband, really important to this county and to a number of other communities throughout the state, and we continue to work to ensure that every single community, every single person in California has access and affordable broadband available to them. Very, very important, and appreciate the work of Supervisor Flores, who sits on our Board, and so elevates the Sutter voice there, and the download that I get often from your CAO, Stephen Smith, about what is most important to Sutter and what I should be doing, and course corrections when they are necessary as we're moving through that. So that's, that's very important. I also want to reference homelessness, which is a significant issue in most communities in California, and something that we've been heavily invested in, and trying to create the most comprehensive solution to address homelessness in the country, which we did this past year. It's called At Home Accountability Transparency Housing Outreach Mitigation and Economic Opportunity, and it is about state, county, and city responsibilities, all levels of government, clear accountability, expectations aligned to investments. And we continue to move forward on that. There are 40 counties that have endorsed that, including most of the counties that surround Sutter. We encourage your Board to take a look at that. Happy to chat about that in another meeting if it's of value to you. But ultimately, our job is to partner with your Board, with your CAO, and with your entire county team to ensure that you have the resources, the authority, and the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense to you. And that is different in Sutter than it is in Merced or Alameda or Los Angeles, and that is something we celebrate. The communities are different. What is most relevant to you is different, and that is exactly what you should be armed to be able to address locally. And so we work very, very hard to ensure that you have the flexibility to do things that make sense to you. And as is always the case in a rural county, your challenges are great, your resources are less than great, and the commitment of the community is outstanding, and that is absolutely true here in Sutter. There's a, almost a forced innovation that often occurs in rural counties, and we've had for the past 25 years an awards program that looks to find the most innovative solutions to significant issues in every county in the state. And this county has won awards through that multiple times, but today I have the great honor to underscore that of the nearly 400 entries in 2023, one county received the overall innovation award, and I'm standing in it. It's Sutter. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah in just a second, but to reference that, that's not an accident. The innovation occurs because it begins with the Board, a Board that is committed to its community, that empowers its CAO and its team, its staff, all the county employees, to find solutions that make sense, and then to take the next step to ensure that they're implemented in a way that meets the community's needs. That's what occurs in this county. And so that starts with your Board. It continues with your CAO, and it goes to your department heads and every single county employee. And because at the core, county service is about community service. It's about purpose, and it's about taking that purpose and applying it to something that is meaningful so that you can really move forward together with your community. That's the goal. And so to see a full room of folks that can hear the message that you're in a county where they're doing it right, they're finding the most effective, the most efficient, the most outcomes-oriented solutions to the challenges that are before the county, and that's awesome. And so what you're gonna hear in just a moment is something that can be done in every single county in the state that started here in Sutter. So whether it's your neighboring Yuba or Calusa, where I was in the middle of the day, or if it's, or Los Angeles, what you're gonna hear about can apply to them as well at a time where attracting workforce is an incredibly challenging thing. Public service is not easy, and it's often not rewarded, but the folks that are doing the work come to, come to the county buildings or out in the community every single day to make a difference and to improve their community, and that's awesome. It fuels me and my team up to be part of that. And with that, let me hand it over to Sarah Everhart Rios, and she's gonna talk you through the great work that's being done right here in Sutter.
Thank you, Graham, Chairman, members of the Board, and colleagues in the audience. I am your Health and Human Services Director, and so I'm very pleased to be here. We'll go ahead and advance the slide and to recognize the staff that earned this award. And so just very briefly, if you'd like to learn more about your Health and Human Services Department, please visit us here on the web, suttercounty.org. We serve between 50,000 and 60,000 community members each year in Health and Human Services, and we have about 575 staff positions that do that work. Next slide. So Graham, talk to you a little bit about the competitiveness and the uniqueness of this award. This is very special recognition to receive the Innovation Challenge Award. And so what did we do to earn this award? Well, we consulted with our most innovative and valuable advisors, our HHS staff, and we asked you, what can we do to make Sutter County a good work environment? And while you gave us many, many solutions and improvements that we need to make, you also told us about what you loved about working for Sutter County. And we asked you if you would share what you loved about working in Sutter County with others in a recruitment video. And our Board of Supervisors and our staff all said yes, lent us their credibility, and appeared in that recruitment video and asked others to join us in this important work that we do here in Health and Human Services. And so the employee testimonials from staff like Priya and Jeremy and many of you in the audience are making the difference. And so certainly, we could not do this work alone, and it requires collaboration, and we needed the support of our county Public Information Officer Chuck Smith to make this video. And so Chuck produced the video in-house with tools and equipment that we already had, and we showed this video at job fairs. We embedded it talking about what it's like to work in Sutter County and what our staff love about serving this community. We embedded it in all of our recruitments, and the video's been viewed over 1,000 times. And when staff come and join us at Sutter County, they often mention that they have seen the video, and so we know that it's working. HHS also worked to create a more connected workplace. We hosted meetings based on information sharing about the work that HHS does, fostering and promoting teamwork. We wanted our HHS staff to get to know each other, the roles that they served on behalf of the community, and the important services that we provided. We wanted to do this in the spirit of non-duplication, effective service delivery, and collaboration so we could better serve our public. And some of the, of course, good suggestions that you see before you on this slide are things that we implemented from staff suggestions. So holding an HHS all-staff meeting every 60 to 90 days using technology that was available to us, but that we just had not reached for before, Microsoft Teams. We also were able to gather information to build a strategic plan, which is in draft form and will be coming before you all in future months for your feedback and input as well. We started to circulate something called HHS Features, which focuses on staff, in their own words, what they do, their titles, and their contact information to inspire teamwork, and again, agency-wide education about what HHS staff do on behalf of the community. And we also wanted to foster an environment of welcoming and a culture of collaboration and belonging. And to do that, we simply put together a flyer that featured the photos of our new staff members so that folks would know who to work with and who to welcome. We also started to just recirculate state-generated tools and flyers for state-funded scholarships and loan repayment opportunities, and we did this and did a little voiceover simply over it so that our staff would know, drawing their attention to these state-funded scholarship and loan repayment opportunities, so they would know you can have these opportunities and work right here in your community and stay in Sutter County. Again, these were tools that were built at no cost to us. Certainly, again, HHS can't do this alone. Our colleagues in the Auditor Controller's Office helped us reach for stay incentives that were state-funded, that would support some of our staff that do the most intensive work. Our child welfare team often responds out 24/7 with first responders into the field in really difficult situations. We operate 24-hour services seven days a week in a locked psychiatric health facility, serving folks who have really intents and needs that we're serving and supporting them with healthcare services, along with crisis services 24/7. We would not be able to have reached those incentives without the support and guidance and leadership of our colleagues in the Auditor Controller's Office. We'll go to the next slide. Our human resources partners stood up so many new things for HHS: electronic onboarding, one-day hiring events, innovative recruitments, and then we started sharing all of the information on social media, which we had not done before, again, just reaching for things that were within our grasp. We also in HHS started to use a technology that we had called NeoGov that was underutilized, that was already purchased by the county, to professionalize our recruitments, and I think it's also making a difference. And last but not least, we partnered with our general services teams to start to implement some modest improvements across HHS sites with refreshed paint and flooring, which immediately supported and improved staff morale, the customers' experience, and our customer service abilities to our communities. And so with the encouragement and support of our Board to collaborate across departments, to work within our means, to reach for the simplest and cost-effective solutions, we are here receiving this recognition on behalf of the county and all of the staff who have contributed to this work. And so Chairman, with your permission, we'd love to join you down with the rest of the Board members and all of the staff from HHS and all of our other colleague departments to be recognized for this award. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. For those who may not be aware, Sarah leads up the largest department in the county with approximately 50% of the employees and approximately 50% of the budget for the county. So, thank you, Sarah.
So as, as folks are, as folks are coming up here, I want to relay something that's really important. The, every county in the state, every local government in the state is struggling with workforce-related issues, but they're not alone. It's also true in the private sector. And there are two things that are most exciting about what Sutter has put together. They're the two intangibles. People are attracted to work for purpose and for culture, and those two things are exactly what was put together through this program in Sutter County, taking lots of different pieces and pulling them all together to ensure that people understand the value to the community. So please join me again in a huge applause for this incredible team that has done such a marvelous job of receiving the top innovation award for 2023.
Should we give the award? Jeremy gets to hold it? Okay. Congratulations, Sarah.
The other kind of mic. Okay, so next we're doing a presentation proclamation for March 24, March for Meals. TJ Payne? Come on up.
Since 1972, the National Senior Nutrition Program has funded local programs that serve home-delivered and contingent meals that help ensure older adults have opportunities to stay healthy and independent and connected. Meals on Wheels, Yuba-Sutter Counties, a direct services of Agent, Agency on Aging Area 4, has been one such funded program to support the health of independents of our community aging adults and individuals with disabilities. Meals on Wheels, Yuba-Sutter and Sutter County staff and volunteers have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to reducing hunger and food insecurity, promoting socialization and well-being, and delaying onset of advanced health conditions for homebound adults. Meals on Wheels, Yuba-Sutter County is an integral part of the Sutter County providing substance, 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 and so much more to our older community members, especially those who's vulnerable to hunger, food insecurity, and socialization. Sutter County recognizes March as the 52nd anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program and celebrates the collaboration of Meals on Wheels, Yuba-Sutter Counties to the health and independence of our county's aging and homebound residents. We express their due diligence, gratitude, and tireless efforts of the staff and volunteers who have dedicated their time and energy to ensure that homebound neighbors receive not only nutritious meals, but also compassion and support they need to present. This proclamation to Meals on Wheels, Yuba-Sutter Counties as a token of our community's appreciation and admiration for the outstanding service.
I would like to thank, thank you to the Sutter County Board of, Board of Supervisors for providing this proclamation to Agency on Aging Area 4 and Meals on Wheels Yuba-Sutter Program. Agency on Aging has been operating the Meals on Wheels for 11 years now, and we are really truly humbled by the older adults we serve. We are serving 450 individuals between Yuba and Sutter Counties, and 70% of them are homebound, and all of them are food insecure and really rely on our meals. So with our meals and local volunteers, we truly deliver dignity, health, and independence of these older adults that we serve. We also, with Meals on Wheels Yuba-Sutter Counties, we also support local economy. All of our meals are provided by local restaurants and catering businesses, and we provide 2,500 meals each week, so there's a lot. So we truly appreciate Sutter County Board of Supervisors for continued support, and we hope to continue to see opportunities, opportunities about grants and other funds and that could sustain the program and also hopefully eliminate the waitlist. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, the Area 4 Aging Group leads us up. They do a lot of good work, not only Meals on Wheels program, but keeping seniors in housing and healthy and keeping them with people around them so they have socialization and those other skills that this group provides on an, on an ongoing basis. And I'd just like to thank you for that. I served on Area 4 Aging Board for like four years, years ago, so thank you.
Okay. Okay, next we have Darren Counts. Countsy? Darren? Oh, come on up. Oh, sorry. Didn't even recognize you. I should know. Okay. This is a proclamation for the Red Cross Month, March 24. During America, during American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Sutter County and the referendum of our communities to care for one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our communities and advances the humanization legacy of the American Red Cross founder Carla Bolton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, whom nobly dedicated herself to advancing, alleviating suffering and today kinders individuals of our community, exemplifying Barton's commitment as they have stepped up through the Red Cross in the California Gold Country region to provide a beacon of hope to our neighbors in need throughout their volunteering and selflessness contribution to make a lifestyle difference in people's darkest hours. Therefore...
Therefore, it is delivering shelter, food, comfort during disaster, providing clinical blood donations for hospitals, patients, supporting military families, veterans, and caregivers throughout the unique challenges of service, saving lives with our first aid, CPR, and other skills or delivering aid and recognizing loved ones separated in global crisis. We recognize and honor those who have led their hearts to serve people in need and ask everyone to join in the commitment to strengthen our community. Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of March 24 as Red Cross Month, Sutter County, and encourages all citizens of Sutter County to reach out and support the humanitarian mission. Thank you.
Well, it's an honor to be back again another year. I really appreciate the proclamation from the board, and it's always an honor to be here to kind of recruit at the same time and share, you know, a quick experience. My experience started in February of 86 when I went out to the Linda Lynn Hurst High School to basically help to shelter, and I was currently working part-time, so it was kind of a quick get-my-feet-wet kind of experience. And from that point on, it was kind of a game changer for me. Of course, I had to work and step in and out a little bit here and there along the way, but I've been back since 2015, and it's a great honor to work with our leadership and provide a lot of different trainings, and we offer, you know, all sorts of recovery to home fires, national disasters, regional disasters, floods, fires, earthquakes. You guys know it all. So it's always an honor to be here, and it's huge respect from the board for this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we've all done something with the Red Cross in our lives. CPR classes they put on, first aid classes they put on, blood drives. They've always come to every aid the county's ever had, you know, like when we had a car fire or the evacuation, Red Cross was always there helping us. So I'd like to thank them for that support over the years. Congratulations. Okay. Next, we have Sarah. We were just up here. Come on back down. Presentation of proclamation for March 24 as National Women's History Month. What's that? Am I on the wrong one? Oh, soco worker. Oh, yeah, I'm off on one. Sorry. Sarah. Sorry about that, guys. Read the wrong line.
It's all right.
Okay, soco worker. Oh, we're still getting people down. Okay. National Soco, Social Workers Month. Is it on? Oh, yeah, there it is. Okay. National Soco, Social Workers Month, March 24. Social workers enter the profession because they have a strong desire to help empower individuals, families, and communities to overcome the issue that prevent them from reaching their fullest potential and have worked more than a century to improve the well-being and support of the basic needs of all people. Social workers follow the code of ethics. They call them to respect the dignity and worth of all people in schools, hospitals, the military, child welfare agencies, adult protective services, public and behavioral health, employment, eligibility, and eligibility, healthcare settings, servicing those who are homeless, conserving, or individually selling, and the criminal justice system throughout numerous programs operated in Sutter County. And there, and the social worker profession is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States with more than 708,000 social workers caring today for individuals that work in Sutter County and expected to grow to 90% in 2031. This is a nation, but okay. Social workers have continued to push for changes that will have made our social and better places to live throughout the programs and advocates that help address poverty, hunger, homelessness, working throughout social and to meet people where they are helped to empower people to reach the goals that they wish to attain. Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of March 24 as National Social Workers Month in Sutter County and ask the residents to join the recognition of the numerous combinations made by, contributions made by Sutter County. Social workers celebrate the support of social workers profession.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Josh Thomas, licensed clinical social worker and program manager within the Children's Services Branch at Sutter County HHS. And I'm honored to be able to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the social workers in Sutter County. So thank you so much for being here. I want to say thank you to the honorable members of the board for allowing this opportunity to accept the proclamation on behalf of these social workers, recognizing March 2024 as National Social Worker Month in Sutter County. The IPSOS has done a survey, and 80% of Americans have a favorable opinion of social workers, and slightly more than 80% of those who have interacted with social workers say a member of the profession improved their situation or that of a family member. Despite this, many are not aware that social work has been a profession for more than 100 years and that social workers have played not only primary roles in providing direct services within many agencies such as hospitals, hospice care, social services, behavioral health, eligibility, employment, community-based organizations, education, research, and so much more. Social workers have also played key roles in creating enduring safety net programs such as social security and Medicare. The primary mission of social work profession is to enhance the well-being and help meet the basic human needs of all people. Social workers are guided by the ethical principles, service, social justice, dignity and worth of the person, importance of human relationships, integrity, and competence. On behalf of Sutter County social workers, I humbly and sincerely thank you for this recognition and proclamation.
Okay, now we'll get on to the National Women's History Month of '24. So Sarah Drown? Oh, Sandy. Sandy, okay. National Women's History Month, March 2024. American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historical contributions to growth and the strength of our nation in countless records and unrecorded ways that have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, social roles in every sphere to the life of a nation by contributing significant portions of the labor force inside and outside of the home. American women played a unique role throughout the history of the nation, providing a majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation and were periodically important in the establishment of early charitable, parent, I can't say that word. Yeah, filth and robbery, filth and robbery. And cultural institutions of our nation, American and American women of every race, class, ethnic background serve as early leaders in the forefront of every major progression of social change movement of women have served our country countlessly in the military, and American women have led, have been leaders not only in securing their own rights and suffrage of the quality opportunities, but also abolishing the movement and placement movements of industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially those places, movements which create a more fair and just social and more desperate of these contributions. The role of the American women in history has been overlooked and undervalued. In the liberty teaching and the study of American history, the Sutter County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as American History Month in Sutter County and encourage residents of this county to join the recognition of numerous contributions made by women with appropriate programs and ceremonies and activities. Thank you.
On behalf of the Yuba City Marysville Sir Optimus Club, we'd like to thank you Chairman Coentr, Supervisors, and Mr. Smith for this recognition for proclamation for National Women's History Month. Just a little history on Sir Optimus. We've been around since 1929 locally. I know. I wasn't a member at the time, but I am old, so. Asians age well. But anyways, thank you for, thank you. It's a lot of vitamins. Anyways, thank you for the recognition. Val, did you want to add anything to that?
Sir Optimus actually is there, it means the best for women, and we know that when we're working with women, we're working with families, and it benefits our whole community. So it's a great organization.
Okay. Next, we have public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. We do have one speaker card under public comment. And Daphne Ransby? Ransby, would you like to please take the podium? Daphne? Denise? Denise? Yes. Yes. Please take the roster in the back. Sorry. Is that mic on?
Hi, my name is Denise Ramsey, and I work for Sutter County In-Home Services. I am a caregiver, and I've been doing this since 2003, and I have two clients. So I've worked for the county for 21 years. Here today, we are asking for better wages, health, and dental benefits. Right now, we are at $16.40. That's like where we're at right now. We want a raise. This raise to us is more like a $5 raise, not just 10 cent raise a year or a 50 cent raise like we have in the past. We are caregivers, and we're asking for health, dental plans, and a 401k plan. When I first started working for Sutter County IHSS, we had a medical plan, but through the years, they have taken it away from us. They also told us that a 10% raise in our medical benefits, but not both. We all, let's see, so most of us chose a raise on our paycheck. Sutter County caregivers do a lot more than what you expect that we do. We're not just here to comfort them, but to help them go from room to room, to help them where they're struggling, get to the chair, to their bed, transferring them, bathing, oral hygiene, grooming, dressing them, helping them with their medicines, help them with their hearing aids, preparing their food, their meals, feeding them if they need it, cleaning their homes to make comfortable and safe most of all for them, shopping, running errands for them, taking them to the medical appointments, and much more. As caregivers, we need to earn a lot more than what they have been giving us. We, as caregivers, are much more worth it. We see that fast food workers make much more than what we do. Many make over $20 an hour and have medical, dental, life insurance, and top it off 40% 401 plan. They also, they also don't do in the caring work that the caregivers do. Most counties offer much more than Yuba Sutter makes. We are helping your families, your friends, helping people at Sutter County. We are caregivers and much more. We work very hard, and we're fighting for what is right for us as caregivers of Sutter County In-Home Services. We want medical, we want dental, and the 401 plan, just like other people in other counties and other businesses does.
You got it done?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. All right, next is the consent calendar, consent counter groups to gather those items which are considered non-controversial or which prior policy direction has been given to staff, and it requires only routine action of the board. The chair will advise the audience that that matter may be adopted by one total motion. However, the board may as its option or upon the request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. Do we have a motion, 1 through 13?
Does the chair?
Yes.
Move to approve.
The motion is second.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number 14.
Presentation of the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation 2023 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, SEDS, appendices 1, 4, and 5 updates. Economic Development Strategy, SEDS, Appendixes 1, 4, and 5 Updates, and the 2023 SEDS Annual Performance and Evaluation and Adoption of the Related Resolution.
Brenda? Good afternoon. Oh, I don't think that loud.
Ah, now, now I'm on. Good afternoon, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Um, I do want to congratulate you all on the Innovation Award, that's pretty cool. Um, we, we have a pretty cool chick in Sarah here and, uh, we certainly appreciate working with her as well. So as most of you know, I'm Brenda Stranix with the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation. I'm the, also the District Director for the Economic Development District, um, as designated by the Department of Commerce. On an annual basis, we create updates to our annual Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Most of you have been involved through the process. Here to give that presentation today, the evaluation, um, is Cynthia Rodrick from my staff, and I want to shout out to Neil Hay for his participation in the updates that we receive for the county. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cynthia.
All right, thank you very much. As Brenda stated, this is a regional planning process and it's designed to help guide us through, uh, our strategies and development projects to make our area a more viable and sustainable region. And it is a two-county region, Yuba and Sutter, including the cities of Yuba City, Live Oak, Marysville, and Wheaton, Wheatland. It never works for me. It's our vision to foster, foster a vibrant, prosperous, growing Sutter region, uh, through exceptional leadership as, from your folks' involvement and involvement in the community. And I'm going to give you some regional statistics here on our employment and workforce. Overall, uh, we have improved over the prior year and, uh, employment has increased by 1.6. There's been growth, uh, in the labor force, we're up by 5.7. Our unemployment unfortunately is still up there and at the time of this, this was in December, so a lot of our migrant workers are no longer employed, so it just reflects that. Next slide. In terms of the poverty and economic overlook, we're doing fairly well and, um, we have improved our region's economic, um, well-being. Education attainment is moving forward and upward and, uh, in terms of, of, uh, high school graduates, we're almost reaching the national levels there. We exceed, uh, levels at the college level and we're still dragging on the higher education levels, but we are moving up in postgraduate degrees. These are some notable achievements that are accomplishments that we have done. Uh, there were several businesses that came or established in the area. Originally in 2022, quarter two, there was 5,529 businesses listed. There are now 5,943. That's a growth of over 400 establishments in the past year. So we are moving forward. Costco opened up, created 175 jobs. Seven businesses opened in Marysville, about 58 jobs. Four opened in Yuba City, creating 100 jobs. And Beal Air Force, although it's, uh, there is job creation with it, they had $11.7 million investment in the region. And just to let you know what the district does, the Yuba Sutter EDD and EDC do, and its consortium partners, they're, this is just a quick overview and it represents what have we done to our, assist our businesses to grow and thrive. In the Yuba Sutter region, there's been some notable movement in the transit. Uh, next generation transit plan was adopted and they did receive a $55 million, a 55-point million dollar grant, uh, to move for their, their facility to be constructed so that they can reach the, uh, statewide, um, move towards, uh, more electric generation and get off of gas. And there's a regional rail project also proposed in the area and hopefully, um, that will do more to reduce greenhouse emissions and get us moving and more connected throughout the Central Valley. Caltrans did complete nine projects and it was a $145 million investment into our region. And there was several projects completed in Sutter County. They had five bridge, um, projects of which two got completed and three are under process and should be completed in this year or the following year. Uh, there was a lot of housing projects in Sutter County. Lakeside at Sutter Point is moving forward and construction of Phase One began. Kristen Court Apartments, Phase Three in Live Oak got completed and Oak Haven Estates, a 16-unit low-income housing project was completed. And in terms of, uh, uh, quality of life, Sutter County Museum hosted over 9,000 visitors. The Seek Parade brought approximately 100,000 people to our area and the Swan Festival brought hundreds also to our area. So we are promoting our region and getting recognition nationwide and across, if you consider the Seek Parade, across many, many countries. Excuse me. Regionally, uh, the Tri-County Youth Development Center, uh, had its ribbon cutting in August and is on fully, will be fully operational by April 24th. 22 million was funded by the state, um, Senate Bill 81, along from funds received from the three counties of Yuba, Sutter, and Colusa. And that's it, as a, just a regional overview. We'll be happy to entertain any questions if you would like. And we request that the Board of Supervisors pass a resolution to accept the SEDS 2023 evaluation and the updates to Appendix 1, 4, and 5. Thank you.
We have no speaker cards. Uh, does anybody want to address this issue before we move on and then go to the board?
Through the Chair.
Go ahead, Mike.
We have to do this SEDS every year, but honestly, I'm unimpressed with Sutter County and what we have going on in there because I don't look at, I look at Yuba County, I look at Costco, I look at all this and that. But I work for Sutter County, I represent here. And what I'm getting at is, is when I look at Beal and I look at $11 million spent, I'm curious what the number was of that spent over here in Sutter County. I'm, I look at Yuba County, just had a lunch earlier in 2023 where they invited all there and I said, you know, let's do the same thing here, so we got to get ahold of Beal because we have a lot of great businesses over here that could do wonders for them over there. It's a regional, it's, it's the Air Force Base. We should be over there soliciting, we should be over there doing the same thing as well and I want to make sure that we're all in equal part here and so forth. But you know, you mentioned, you mentioned Sutter Point, it's a big deal. It's huge. It's important that, you know, we get that thing finally going and the same thing with the, um, with, we could use your help too in, in, and working with the, with the state and the federal government in other lands that we, we have unbuildable because of FEMA and so forth. But it's all tied together at the end of the day, it's literally all tied together. FEMA, commercial growth, everything is tied together. And it's with agriculture, you know, we, I sent a letter to the President earlier this week because, you know, the State of the Union in agriculture, manufacturing, and so forth, our manufacturers, our ag manufacturers, manufacturers in general have taken a heavy hit in this area. There's a lot of layoffs, it's not good, and next year doesn't look to be any better. So we're going to need everyone's help, involve, Brenda, your help, you know, we just hired Scott Powell and so forth to build this thing up, to really push our county to the forefront. We want to be there, we're innovative, we've got great people, and I believe the leadership here is, is pushing for the same thing. But next year, when we do the same SEDS, I want to see everything, you know, I want to see us pop on there. I want to see everything, hey, this is what we're doing, these are the jobs that were just grown because I know for a fact, I know over 100 people that have lost, well, I'm sorry, I've heard of over 100, just in the ag manufacturing alone, that have lost jobs in the past few months. It's not good. So, um, but like I said, I'll make a motion to approve this when it comes down to this because we have to do it every year.
We have a motion, uh, any other comments?
I'll just second the motion and thank you for the presentation, appreciate it.
Anything? Nope. We have a motion, a second, uh, roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Okay, next item 15, Steve Smith, County Administrator, follow-up reports and announcements.
Yes, uh, thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. And I just wanted to mention and thank, um, all county staff, um, that worked on the CSAC Innovation Award. We've, we've previously won a NACO Award that was also related to a behavioral health program in HHS. We've got staff winning state awards, uh, like we had the undersheriff up a couple weeks ago. And, um, we continue to be innovative and I know in these days of social media, it sometimes feels like, um, it's only negative comments coming at us and, um, bad news can overwhelm us at times. But I just appreciate that these organizations and, and the, the Board of Supervisors as well are recognizing the significant, um, contributions that county staff make to the community. So appreciate it, thank you.
Anything else, Steve? Nothing? Okay, um, correspondence, we have several items, um, Planning Commission, uh, pooled investments, alcohol and beverage license, and agencies, commissions and vacancies on various agencies and the county boards. So you guys should look at those at your convenience. District reports? Mike?
Um, yeah, first of all, um, I'd like to send a plaque to, this is commemorating the Nebraska Rifle Team, our own Madeline Erickson, who's a senior this year at Nebraska. They took eighth place in the NCAA for air rifle. It's incredible, she graduates this year, um, shot all four years, um, scholarship there. And this past weekend, I emceed and, and actually our sheriff was there as well at the Sutter Rifle Team Dinner and I, it's really neat to find out over 40 scholarships, 38 Division One students from Sutter High School that have shot Division One athletics through the school. That's incredible, 38, wow. So, um, Wyden was here from Memphis for her last night enjoying the dinner, that was pretty neat. And then I'd like to send out some certificates to, um, these are our region proficiency winners from Sutter High School FFA, um, Marissa Fedora, Kate Stafford, Quinn Stafford, and Eva Scott. I'd like to do an award, uh, some, same thing, a certificate for, um, Colby Christensen, she just did one of her leadership, um, took first and, and for FFA, these are FFA awards, very neat. We're huge in the FFA here, um, and it's really awesome, we all go to the fairs and so forth and check it out, really neat. And then I'd like to close in memory of, uh, Dave Lunsford, who passed away February 28th. Dave was, lived in Sutter there, right down the street from me, did a lot for the community, he's got the three grandkids there and just an amazing guy. I'm way too young, but, um, that's it for me.
Okay, anybody, any else, Mike? Dan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have one announcement, they, um, Happy Viking, downtown Yuba City in the heart of Sutter County on Pluma Street, they're holding their annual St. Baldrick's Foundation fundraiser. Uh, they do a really good job with this, if you don't know, St. Baldrick's is an organization that helps conquer kids' cancer or children's cancer. And every year, um, some people come and have their hair cut off, so, you know, I'll challenge Karim Baines to join me over there to get his hair cut off.
How about you, Dan?
I don't have any hair left, so there's not much to cut off, but yeah, I think, you know, I think it's a really good cause and I'd like to, um, definitely invite anybody and I think it'd be a good, you know, it would be unfair for our, uh, fire chief to take on our sheriff, but, uh, in this case, I think he might have a little edge there, so I don't know if that would be a fair push. But maybe we, somebody else can challenge somebody else in, in this and, uh, it was really usually a really good turnout at Happy Viking and the Drowns put on a good event. Uh, and that starts at, uh, 11 o'clock, it's from 11 to 2, uh, this Saturday, okay? And, uh, Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody.
Thank you, Dan. Karim?
I just request two letters of sympathy and condolences to go out to the families of Gurdave Khorshanker and Ruth Pabinga.
Anything else? No? That's it?
You know what, I'd like to save something through the Chair, I want to wish her colleague here safe travels as he, um, he's going to take his father back to India. So safe travels and we'll see you in a few weeks.
Yeah, and just remember those good memories, Karim. Okay, uh, I have just a couple things. First, I'd like to, uh, recognize International Women's Day, March 8th. Uh, I'd like to take a moment to thank and honor all the incredible women who struggled and courage, strengthened courage, inspired me every day. My mother and my wife, namely. I would like to request a proclamation of recognition for First Responders Wellness Week, Maternal Mental Health, uh, Childhood Leader Prevention Week, and WICS, uh, 50-year anniversary. And that is all, so we'll take a motion now for the, one more thing?
I got actually two things, I'd like staff to look into, um, I had some constituents reach out and talk about, um, doing some sort of community garden behind the Sutter Library in Sutter. And then I also have some, I've had, um, what is it, St. Vincent's, the, the group right here, here in Sutter County, um, reached out to the county and I told them I'd give the request to our Steve Smith to, they're asking for some monetary donations towards beds, they have run out of beds with everything that's going on with this, the way this economy is, they haven't seen it like this in a while and they are literally out of cots.
Um, I just have one more thing that I forgot to mention earlier. Um, I'd like us to work and the board possibly to sign a letter supporting the Wheatland bypass, uh, around Wheatland to take, alleviate the traffic through Wheatland. Um, I, I would think that it'd be a good thing for this, the board, to support that project in Yuba County to, um, try to alleviate some of the traffic off 65. If the board is so inclined, I'd like to see us all sign the letter.
No, I couldn't agree more and sorry, last thing, um, before Scott, I keep on looking at you in the face, um, if we can get a report back on what's going on next meeting, that would be really awesome.
So if we can do that letter, Chuck, uh, I guess he left, okay.
I make a motion.
Okay.
I got one, real quick one.
Okay, go ahead, Karim.
So just going back to Graham's presentation earlier, that, um, if we have not signed on or show a letter of support, that if staff can look into see, you know, what that, look into it and see what can you do to support him. Thank you.
Thanks, Karim. We have a motion?
Second.
Second, Dan? The roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Before we go into closed session, we have one public, uh, comment speaker card, George Carpenter, would you take the roster, please?
That's green now. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, I'm George Carpenter and, um, here to speak on an item that's on your closed session agenda, it's the third item listed, there's no number or letter there designating it. And the letter is a letter I wrote requesting that you proceed with amending a development agreement. It's a request that I originally put into the county in December of '22 and then updated that, or November 22, updated it in December and '23. And it's, we're in a tough spot where we are right now and, um, the, we've had East Nicholas High School District, um, make some really tough demands, they've, um, they've sued us and this is all brought about by a provision that's in our development agreement that I think is illegal. And so, um, we've offered the county a path, uh, to address that, we proposed a development agreement amendment where both sides get something out of it. And so, um, I would like you just to consider it and give us a decision and let us move forward. We're about to put tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure in the ground this spring and so, um, we'd really like to just keep things moving, so, that's all I have. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, George. We now have a closed session.
We have five closed sessions scheduled. The first one is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Case name, estate of Linda Miller et al. versus the county of Sutter et al. Case, US District Court, Eastern District of California, case number 220 CV-00577-KJM-DMC, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection D, subsection 1. Number two, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Case name, Hunt Jr. versus the county of Sutter. Case, Sutter County Superior Court Case Number CVC S20-0000839, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection D, subsection 1. Number three, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, South Sutter LLC, care of Wind Communities. Letter dated November 13th, 2023, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection E, subsection 5. Number four, public employee appointment, county council, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. And number five, conference with labor negotiator Deborah McKelley, unrepresented employee, county administrator, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6.